Silence, public service announcements, department reports, action items, and then we will move to old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and executive session. Would that please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I'd like to just take a moment of silence tonight. I know a lot of politics in the Middle East are quite fraught, but with that, I just would join you all with a prayer for peace and a thought for our service members and all the innocent women and children. So with that, please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Public service announcements, Mary Lou.
Okay, just that the Trick or Treat and the Horribles Parade is going to be 5:00 to 7:00 Friday, October 31st on the Common. It is sponsored by not Disturbage Fire Department, but Disturbage Firefighters Association, not to be confused. And it's the annual Horribles Parade following Trick or Treat. It starts behind Town Hall at 7:00, and that will be followed by a costume contest with prizes, hot chocolate, and cookies for all.
Great. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Chase, anything?
Nothing from me, thank you.
I have nothing either. Robin, anything?
Just that we will have another meeting before Halloween, but on Friday, the 31st, Halloween Day, we will have Town Hall open to any young ones who are even adults who'd like to come in and get candy.
Chase was going to ask me after.
In case you could come get a Hershey bar. And we will have that open. I know there's a library program that's going on, and they'll be bringing over kids after the library program around 11:30. So for anybody listening, if you have children and you want to bring them into Town Hall during the day, and I will tell you, Town Hall employees are not shy about engaging in costumes.
Great. I don't think we have any department reports tonight, do we, Robin?
No.
Okay. Town administrator update?
That's it for me. We'll save it for other stuff.
Sounds good. All right, going to action items. Action item A, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Brandon Hill as a full-time police officer with benefits of a three-year officer excluding longevity at the rate of 39.16 per hour effective October 7th, 2025. Chief?
Good evening.
All right, I bring in Brandon Hill in front of you. Please recommend him to the position of full-time police officer. He brings in to us over five years of valuable law enforcement experience in East Brookfield and the Brimfield Police Department. In recognition of his experience, professionalism, and dedication to public safety, I recommend that Mr. Hill be appointed effective October 7th, 2025 at the rate of 39.16 per hour with the benefits afforded to a three-year officer excluding longevity. And I attach his letter of his resume and his cover letter for your review.
Great. Questions from the board?
I have none.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Brandon Hill as a full-time police officer with the benefits of a three-year officer excluding longevity at the rate of 39.16 per hour effective October 7th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Very welcome on board.
Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Congratulations, thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Remember what I said.
Absolutely.
I don't know what she said, but I second that.
Oh, we're definitely listening to her.
All right. Okay, moving on. Consideration and possible action on approval of a transfer agreement for K-9 Rea from the Sturbridge Police Department to the Charlton Police Department.
So you have a memo on that outlining the history background and thought process behind this. We think it'll be a great fit for Rea and for us, that she will still be available to us through some regional work. Chief, is there any questions? The chief certainly can answer those.
No, I think it made sense to me. Questions from the board?
It made sense after reading that memo. The steps taken were proper.
Yeah, and you know, I figure if we're supporting Charlton, that's not that far away from supporting, and vice versa. So, anything, Chase, on that?
Nothing.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer agreement for K-9 Rea from the Sturbridge Police Department to the Charlton Police Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on to action item C. This troublemaker.
He's bad.
Consideration and possible action for the board to sign a proclamation for the Sturbridge Rotary Club of Massachusetts in Starbridge, England proclaiming October 15th, 2025 as Sturbridge Rotary Friendship Day. Klaus?
He's our fall reminder every year. We're entering into the fall season.
So let me just quickly tell you a little bit of the story. The year that Sturbridge celebrated its 250th, which was 1988, there was a massive parade. And I was president of the Sturbridge Rotary Club at that time, and I knew it was with a star in England, so I looked it up, and I was surprised to find that it was a Sturbridge Starbridge Rotary Club. So I wrote to them and invited them to come and join us at the parade. They did. Five of them came, spent a week with us, and that started a phenomenal relationship that's still very, very active today. Some years later, so soon after that, we started annual greetings, not between the town, but between the clubs. And then maybe a decade later, we started this proclamation process where annually we send, the town sends greetings to Starbridge, and the club also sends greetings to Starbridge. That has escalated now to a point where this year will be the second year where we'll be actually doing this live on video from right here. Last year, we did it, and what happens is that, bear in mind, there's a five-hour time difference here. So what happens is that the Starbridge Rotary Club meets for lunch. Their meeting starts at 1:00, and around about 1:30 their time, i.e. 8:30 AM our time, we open the link between the two, so they've had a chance to eat. The people who will be there will be a large proportion of the Rotary Club members, but also the mayor. Now, the mayor over there is not the mayor of Starbridge. Starbridge is incorporated in the metropolitan borough of Dudley, which is a much bigger region. So that the local political system is much, much bigger. But the mayor is always there. The mayor sends and signs greetings to our town. We do the same thing there. And when the actual paper arrives, we in fact put it into the hall downstairs. So if you go to the bottom of the stairs, you hang an immediate left, look at the wall, there it all is. So the greetings are renewed by me every year, but it also tells a little bit about Starbridge, what the relationship is. And there's a genuine royal cartographer's map going back to 17 something or other that was presented to us by their club.
Well, the good ones go back to 1970s, so.
Bear that in mind. So what I'm really asking of the board is to please create, and I understand it has already been created, the proclamation for this year. I will scan it, I will email it, but I will also mail it, snail mail, and correspondingly do the same for us. So my request of the board is, please do this.
Certainly. No, it's a lovely thing. We've been a part of it for some years, and it's, it's great. The only issue I have, if it's October 15th, I believe is the date?
It is this year, yes.
Okay, I might have to do it from Boston on a break in an arbitration, but.
We'll virtual him in.
Yeah, so we'll have to figure that out. That might solve itself on my end. But other than that, any questions, thoughts, concerns from the board?
None.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do it for a second. Sorry. All right, all those in favor? Great. Thanks, Klaus.
See you on the 15th, Klaus.
I'll make sure to.
See you on the 15th.
Absolutely. Will you be here?
I will. And Francis will work with you on the proclamation?
Yes, and please just make sure I get on the calendar, yeah. Thanks, Klaus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, okay, moving on. Consideration and possible action on an abatement request from David Arnold of 16 Old Hamilton Road. Is Mr. Arnold here?
I don't believe he is. He was aware of the meeting. I'm not sure that Mr. Arnold was comfortable coming or understood fully.
Okay.
We still can discuss this, though, I think, quickly. This has to do with a question of where the clog was on the sewer line. The clog, there has been issues with it, there have been issues with this before. It is somewhere between his house and the line. So it is, it is a private homeowner issue. Because we had to call in people, it ended up being a $547 charge, I believe. And he has some interest that we cannot waive. Barbara, Heather, and I met on that preliminary meeting. The only way we can ever abate is if it's a mistake. This was not a mistake. However, Heather has indicated that, given the sort of the special circumstances with this particular individual, we could waive 140 of it because there's no cash out of pocket to the town on that portion. And we are willing to work with him. We are trying to let him know he could do a payment plan if he needs to. So we would not recommend an abatement of the other 300 and change because it is cash out of pocket, but we can work on payment plans, and we are working with a number of people in town to assist this gentleman.
So it's a recommendation to us that we reduce by $140 and then set a payment plan?
Yep, Heather has the final numbers, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thoughts, concerns from the board?
It makes sense to me.
Mary Lou, you go first?
It's perfect sense.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Go ahead, Chase.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reduce the abatement request by $140. Robin?
Yes.
You would abate $140?
Abate $140 and work out a payment plan with the gentleman.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, moving on. Consideration and possible action, oh, no, we're moving from that one. Moving to consideration and possible action on authorizing the town administrator to approve the tie-in bond contract for engineering services for Route 131 sewer replacement for $106,200 with funding from Article 42 FY '24 Annual Town Meeting.
Nothing out of the ordinary in this one.
Okay. Questions, thoughts from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to approve the tie-in bond contract for engineering services for Route 131 sewer replacement for $106,200 with funding from Article 42 fiscal year '24 Annual Town Meeting.
Please second.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Similarly, with Article G, consideration and possible action on authorizing town administrator to approve the tie-in bond contract for engineering services for permit year eight stormwater assistance, assistance, excuse me, for $90,000 with funding from Article 34 FY '26 Annual Town Meeting.
Those are annual stormwater requirements.
Yeah. All right, any questions, thoughts? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to approve the tie-in bond contract for engineering services for permit year eight stormwater assistance for $90,000 with funding from Article 34 FY '26 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Excellent.
Did we jump over you?
Yeah, we did. But I was removing from that.
Yep, that's where he's removed.
Oh, okay, yeah.
My fault. I should have stated that. All right, moving to H. Consideration and possible action for conservation land use permit of Riverlands, October 18th, 2025, 3:00 PM for the Great Sturbridge Pumpkin Walk Carving Contest. All right, what's going on, Lauren?
Good evening, everyone. Lauren Vivier, Conservation Agent. So we are hosting this first Pumpkin Walk Carving Contest. It's on the Half Loop for the Riverlands on the 18th. So you can enter the carving contest, or you can just come for the walk. They'll vote for different age categories. We're going to light the trail up with paper lanterns and safety lights every few feet. The police department's loading a light for the parking lot, and we've got STA funds to help pay for the other lighting and awards and whatnot. So looking for lots of participants. We'll see how it goes the first year, but hopefully this is kind of an ongoing tradition that will be something to look forward to every year and kind of just brings that hometown feel to a lot of these events that are kind of taken over by a lot of corporate things these days.
That's a good idea.
No, it's a great idea. Thank you for adding, because I know you have enough on your plate.
If I can find little things to help bring joy in the midst of all the permitting and whatnot, too, that works for me. I'll make the time for it.
That's great. Thoughts, questions, concerns?
How did you come up with this?
Really, I kind of am just a little annoyed with all of the pumpkin walks that are, you have to pay $40 to go to, and it's professional artists, and I feel that it's something that kind of just got lost over the years of, I just remember from my childhood of just seeing ones that my friends did and my neighbors did. And it's just something local, and we have such great spaces and so many events that are going on. You've got Harvest Fest that day and so many other things going on in town that, you know, it keeps people in the area, and it's free entertainment. Anyone can enter, so just something new and different.
Lauren's done a lot of community-based stuff, and she's gone to really, I think, bring conservation to light with the photo contest, and so.
Yep, we did the photo contest. We've been doing a lot of public education and outreach. We've got another public education that we're planning for the spring, kind of focusing on lake health. So just trying to connect a lot more with the public.
A positive rapport with the community and conservation, because they do so much good. And unfortunately, sometimes that's, that's not all we hear, but there's so much good that gets done out of that commission and that department.
Well, it's hard to be a policing function, so it's nice to have some interactions where, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, there's so many other things in it. Exactly. And it's a good opportunity to kind of just connect with the community and really get them to understand the importance of wetland protection and why we're doing what we do, and that it's not just about, you know, having the authority to say no to what you can and cannot do on your land. It's about trying to inform you as to why these regulations are in place, and just as much for the protection of your land and your, you know, property as it is anything else.
No, makes sense to me. All right.
I think it's a great idea.
Oh, thanks, Mary Lou. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the land use permit of Riverlands, October 18th, 2025, from 3:00 to 8:00 for the Great Sturbridge Pumpkin Walk Carving Contest.
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor? Thanks, Lauren. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Okay, moving on to I. Deep Roots Distillery, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Deep Roots Distillery USA for the 35th Annual Harvest Fest, October 18th and 19th, 2025 event on the Common.
And I've also let Keith know that he can give a little update on the Harvest Fest because people have been asking.
Yes, so that way people at home can hear kind of what we're, the direction we're going. So we are looking for the permit for the same thing we've done the last two years. This will be our third year doing it. No changes there. And also for the Harvest Fest update, so we're going more towards the Harvest Fest thing as opposed to, they were kind of going towards the carnival before. So this year, we're going to have a pumpkin carving demonstration with a professional carver, and we're going to see if she's okay with donating a pumpkin to the Pumpkin Walk. So we'll have someone bring it over there and put it on display. We're having, we're hoping to get a woodworking person there. She makes like little worry gnomes. She just carves it real quick, and then people can take them and rub them, and she just gives them out for free. We're going to have a small hay maze for the kids, so that way they can, you know, and we're going to have the tables and chairs set up so that way they're facing the entrance, so the parents can have a seat, and they can just let their kids go in there. And so that way, you know, they can still see them, but it's for like the little toddlers. We're also going to have, the dancing witches are back. We're going to have a couple animals brought in for the kids. They can kind of feed them. There's going to be a dunk tank fundraiser for the police and fire department. They're taking it one day, and then we open it up for local sports teams, so they can raise money, come dunk your coach, or whatever, whatever they want to do. So look out for that email. We're also going to have, we vetted a lot more of the vendors this year, so that everything's handmade. There's nothing out of a catalog, and you have to be, you know, a crafter or someone like that to make it. We're going to have a produce farm, so Stillman's Farm is going to come up, set up a display, so you can buy fresh produce, like a harvest. And then the next day, Petri Farm is coming, and they're going to have a display of like a farm at the door, what they offer, which is a home delivery service for local farm produce and stuff like that. I'm sure a lot of people don't know about it. We're going to have a magician and a lot of local music, like they always do. We are short two food trucks, so if anyone, I'm putting it out there, if anybody's listening, know, we had two cancellations last minute. Someone knows anybody that would like to do a food truck for Harvest Fest? Reach out, please, and we would love to.
And I want to thank Keith and Erica for stepping up, because this was something that had faded, was fading, and then when the chamber sort of let, said they weren't going to do it anymore, we were afraid we were going to lose it. We just didn't have the staff capacity at the short term to take that on that quickly. And really, it's a great public-private partnership, I think, with the local business that's, you know, doing so much in our town with a lot of small business and creative ideas that they're doing in their own business. And to step up and take this on, I think, is really a great community partnership.
You know, we're from Sturbridge. We've been here 20 years. We brought our kids to Harvest Fest every year. We participated in the pumpkin carving contest and the scarecrow contest, and we didn't want to see it go away, so that's why we decided to try to put it on. I'm sure they'll be a little low this year because of the transition. Some vendors didn't want to come back, but we're hoping to grow it more towards the Harvest Festival farming and agricultural feel.
No, it's nice.
Feel it should be.
Yeah.
Very nice of you to do that.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the extra effort. We know you're busy.
We're all busy, right?
Well, all right, with that, do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to issue the one-day liquor license to Deep Roots Distillery USA for the 35th Annual Harvest Fest, October 18th, 19th, 2025 on the Town Common.
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you. Hopefully we see you guys there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Similarly, consideration and possible action on issuing a one-day liquor license to Hardwick Vineyard and Winery for the 35th Annual Harvest Fest, October 18th and 19th on the Town Common. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, going to K. Consideration and possible action on the issuance of a live entertainment license to Angelina's 538 Main Street. So I think this is the first time they saw this, right, Robin?
Yes, the first time for live entertainment.
Yes, and everyone approved this department and asked for their fire department. They just weren't cautioned about maximum capacity for live entertainment. Everyone was in favor?
All right, great. And we haven't had any, chief, we? No.
Chief, no concerns?
We haven't, everything's been going well at Angelina's.
Yeah, no, no concern.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion?
I'll make, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to issue the live entertainment license to Angelina's 538 Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. I'm glad they're doing well. All right, we are moving to the special town meeting, Articles 46, 47, 49 of the November 17th Town Meeting. So we're going to need a motion to open the special town meeting, right?
Well, so you've already opened.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm going to need motions to place, support and place in support, I believe it is, for at least these three articles tonight, and then the next ones will be on the next meeting.
Gotcha.
46 is just the standard unpaid bills. 47 is dog licensing, and this is something that's required by the state. Lynn has been working closely with Michelle as well, Michelle Connors, and we had our land use and zoning meeting on this. So the state's requiring that we have kennel licenses for over so many dogs, whether residential or commercial. This bylaw pretty much mirrors what other towns have done, but we're going to have to put something in by state law.
I mean, it didn't seem too exciting to me. Any concerns or thoughts from the board?
No.
And then the final one for tonight's consideration is a bylaw on buildings and construction. This goes to the whole question of amplifiers and radios in buildings, and Mary Lou's nodding because she knows. Our cold storage facilities, for example, when they were built, we asked them to put those in, and they certainly complied. But this basically says that any building over a certain size constructed in town, which we don't have all that many that are going to be constructed, but if they are with that kind of a wall, that they are required themselves to have the amplifying device in. And we actually have some that don't, that we're actually considering approaching and asking them to. But we'd like to have a bylaw going forward. Other communities, this mirrors from another community, and so I'm just asking for these three articles tonight for place and support, if the board is comfortable.
Absolutely. Yeah, I didn't see anything. Then I'll make a motion to place in support Article 46, Article 47, and Article, yeah, 46, what did I do, 46, 47, and?
49.
And 49, excuse me. I'm placing a support them. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. Okay, and then we're moving to M. Consideration and possible action on the acceptance of resignation from Officer Garrett Dana effective September 28th, 2025. What is, so do we have a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Officer Garrett Dana effective September 28th, 2025.
Yeah, and second?
Second.
All those in favor? And we appreciate the service to the community. Okay, then we are moving to old business. Mary Lou, any old business?
No, not tonight.
Chase?
No, old, thank you.
I have none either. Chase, any new business?
I saw the island out by the sign.
Yes.
Which is good, yeah.
So that closes out the Babes' contract, and then we still are working on the adopt-a-spot mulch areas for that island and the other two, as well as the Sturbridge STA one.
I meant to comment on that as well. It did look nice when I came by.
And they said, I talked to them, and Joe Cohen said, next spring it'll really pop. You know, those are perennials, but next spring, when everything really starts flowering, it'll look, it'll look real nice.
Good.
Great. All right, and I have, oh, we do have new, one point of new business, which is filling Mary Blanchard's seat, unfortunately. I think that the, we could technically appoint someone or hold a special election, but given that the, her term is up in February, it would seem to make the most sense to just wait until the next election, unless someone has strong feelings for the county.
No.
It just would seem to be a lot of extra effort with the, if we were more closely, you know, if we had more 3-2 votes, I think I'd be more concerned about it. It's not really the nature of this board as constituted. So that's that. Then correspondence, because Mary Dowling is not here, I will just read off. We received correspondence from Trish McLeary of 21 Ponton Street regarding an issue in the neighborhood. We received a letter from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a national petition, and we received a correspondence regarding House Bill 2432 from Surrounding Communities regarding an act to reduce incidents in death from pancreatic cancer.
And on that one, I don't know if you want to take a vote to support it, or if you just want to acknowledge and accept.
I don't, is there, was there asked to support, or?
Yeah, if you wanted to, to sign on, but it, or we could just send a letter saying we acknowledge.
I mean, I think we're fine supporting a bill that, against pancreatic cancer.
It doesn't have any funding tied to it or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, we're just supporting the bill as stated, so.
We'll send a letter up.
Yeah, so I think, I guess we make a, do we have a motion to support the bill?
I'll make a motion to support the bill.
All right, do a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, moving to our approval of minutes of September 15th, 2025. Do we have any edits?
None that I found.
Yeah, I have none.
Nothing. Do we have a motion to approve the September 15th, 2025 minutes as written?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, so then we are on to, we have executive session tonight, but before that, citizens forum. Anything from the public?
I would like to move mine here to the open session place.
Okay, then let me just take a minute to get organized, okay? Anything else before that, from anybody? No?
What, what do you want? Ask a couple questions about that. Live Home of the Brave Race.
Oh, sure. Come on down and see.
Yes.
Four miles, yeah. South Mass from over at 148 Cedar.
How's it going? Nice to see you.
Great seeing Klaus here. He, you know, kind of co-conspirators now in the 5K here, so we're, we're, we, last year, we got on board helping kind of promote the Trek Sturbridge, and he kindly has helped get the word out for Home of the Brave, so we added their race under the race that we're promoting. So we've got a nice little postcard, if anybody's interested, for Home of the Brave Race. Could see anybody. And just a little bit of clarity, over the years, it's been, I know former VSO Mr. Strupa kindly volunteered above and beyond of the family situation, and so he passed the baton to Johnny Rice, and Johnny Rice and Pam and Mills and I, kind of last couple of years, kind of, yeah, we've made it happen. So the funding organization on, it's been a little bit murky, I'll be honest, I'm not entirely sure. So it'd be really great to get clarity on funds that have been raised over the years. Last year, we were able to send a donation check to the American Legion, just spoke with the commander earlier today, and about 3,500 has been deployed, and, you know, so love to just kind of, there's just been interesting, like, trying to figure, how do we, how do we make this communication pattern all work to, all work together as much as a cohesive community to support our veterans, and knowing this year, the money seems to not be able to be deployed to outside of funds that I'm not aware of how any veteran is able to apply for, and I don't know if any veteran has, since the Home of the Brave Race, received any funds as a benefit of the race outside of those funds that the American Legion have paid to support veterans. So love to just...
I can answer.
Answer.
Sure. So I'll give you a little background. Originally, the funds were collected and went into an account that is still here that has, I believe, $13,000. It was very specifically designed for veterans, and as Mike Strupa had explained it to me, non-chapter veterans. It was originally, the spirit of it was for veterans who didn't necessarily qualify under the benefits plan, but who might have hit hard times, and it is for fuel, food, and home heating, I believe, only.
When you say benefit plans, you mean that have disability ratings?
No, if they're eligible for the Chapter 115.
Yeah.
This was, the spirit of this was for those who were not eligible for Chapter 115. I haven't, I have to find Mike's documentation, but that's what, how it was indicated to me from Mr. Strupa. We never had anybody apply, and I talked to Mike, let's try to outreach as best as we can. Unfortunately, obviously, this situation with Mike got difficult. The SEC then voted to give the money to the American Legion, unbeknownst to Barbara. We cannot, by laws, the anti-aid amendment, we cannot raise money under the Town of Sturbridge using Sturbridge funds and then choose a group, even if it's as wonderful as the American Legion. We, as a government, cannot pick who funds go to. So because it had already been advertised that way, we certainly couldn't undo it, we'd advertised it to people that way, so that's why you all got that lump sum of money. If somebody wanted to set up a private, like, it used to be under the Friends of the Seniors, that's how it was originally getting collected, and then it can be delineated if a Friends group collects it, but we cannot take in money under the Town of Sturbridge and put out money under the Town of Sturbridge and then choose any nonprofit to give it to. So that's why it couldn't come back to the American Legion this year. It wasn't anything particular about the Legion, it's just, it's called the anti-aid amendment, and it's very clear that no government funding and anything collected that goes into our general fund can do that. Now, we can collect for stabilization fund, and basically, this other separate account was conceptually that. That money is still sitting there, that 13,000. It has to be used for those three things, though. That was what it had been collected for. Now, we certainly can revisit if we want to redo the parameters of that, and I just have to figure out the original establishment of that, how it was established, was it a town meeting, was it a select board vote, and then undo that if we wanted to change that. But that's the status. That money is there. If a veteran walked in tomorrow and said, "I need money for food," they would get money out of that account. But we have not had anybody, we did not have people apply.
Is there, is there a structure as to how it's portioned out? So if it's, I think you said it's $13,000, so there's X amount for, is there per?
I actually don't know if they put any caps on it. I don't know if Mike had ever put any cap on for anybody. We have, in the meantime, with the ARPA money, we had bought food cards, fuel cards, gift cards, and we did have some people take advantage of that, but they were not veterans, otherwise we would have forwarded them to that fund.
So the fund has no restriction on its utilization, assuming it's for veterans, obviously, but in terms of whatever assistance is given, the town can elect to do what it wants, or is there, because it doesn't sound like there's any conditions?
No, there are no conditions, other than the fact that when it was drafted, it was for those three others.
Yeah, those top topics.
It was an internal, internal conditions, but nothing, it's not VSO money, it's not state money. It was literally money from the road race, and the spirit of it was to go to just help out a veteran who hit some hard times.
Okay. So I think that answers your question anyways, sort of?
Yeah, sort of. Okay, so that's actually more information than I knew, so that's great. The, it sounds like there's prior structures, so as I understand it, the race company had, you know, the money goes into the race company, Run Sign Up, I think, is the vendor, and so there is an SEC Sturbridge Events Committee allocation that covers cost of T-shirts and a few other things. And so in terms of like the co-mingling of and the legality of it coming out of the general fund, because the SEC funds went direct to T-shirts, medals, et cetera, and then the race proceeds from people registering for the race was in a, effectively, I see it as different buckets or different silos.
Yes.
It didn't touch. So the money from somebody registering for the event goes directly to the Run Sign Up organization.
Yeah.
And it's set that sitting there, and then that gentleman, I forget his name, you know, essentially, it's like, so who do we disperse this money to?
Sure, sure.
And historically, for the first five, well, there was some way of town sponsors, so if a company sponsored the event, those funds were then an additional category that were able to be deployed to Veterans Inc., fill in the blank, great, great, you know, organization, valid. And so there's a few gradations that I love, 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 and it's been, I should have prefaced this, I think I did, yeah, obviously, we, you know, Mr. Strupa, fellow veteran.
Uh huh.
Incredibly, just terrible situation with his family.
Sure.
And want to start with solid empathy. I also just want to note that in the absence of an active, proactive role of VSO, I think we spoke about this a little bit over the years, I, you, you said if anybody, any veteran comes in that needs help, you're not gonna turn them away. And I don't know if I shared the day of, but in reflection of that conversation, and in communicating with other veterans, particularly those that I have expressed a need, there is some degree of pride.
Yeah.
There's a trepidation. To frankly come to the town administrator, with a position of authority to say, "Hey, I really need, need some groceries." So I frankly, I think that's a key reason why nobody's asked.
So I will say this, first of all, I have multiple pages of legal opinion on how those buckets work. We do not have the latitude, and I will be happy to provide the legal opinion to you.
I don't think this question...
If you, but if you don't understand.
No, no, but I don't, I don't think that was the point. I think the point more is is that, and I don't want to speak for you, please don't, don't.
Please, no, no, you might.
Yeah, so I think what I'm understanding here, if I'm hearing the circumstances that, you know, we hire the vendor, the vendor distributes funds, the funds, the town funds go to the town, the town can't, can only do what they do with that, because that's just how the government works. Certain other funds are designated to, I presume, some of the operations of the race itself, and then to the Legion. Fair? Those are sort of where the money from the race goes right now?
That one year, the Legion money.
Who's it, one time?
The one, one year for the time. And then, okay, gotcha. And so then the, and then what's occurring now is that we think that there is a certain pride point that's keeping our vets from accessing the funds as it stands at the moment, because of the variety of operational changes, which we all know. So, and the point here is, how do we resolve that going forward on some?
That, it expanding the definition to that activities of daily living would be ideal. The Town of Warren, with VSO's Durkey's guidance and strategy, has, has helped expand where the current food heat, that it's pretty narrow, and at the discretion of a VSO that the board and town have, you know, put the faith and trust in, and with the correct reporting, personally identified little information, all secure, everything, but want to empower the VSO to, A, have a little expanded latitude authority for the, with the wording of activities of daily living, ADL, and since that's very much so in kind of the home healthcare VA, you know, definitions, and then also making that, that pot of money clear and accessible to the VSO. And as I understand it, it, when I've spoken with Mr. Strupa in the past, it, there's been a lot of markiness on this, and so I think some type of a memo to kind of tighten things up, just, I'm not looking to...
No, no, it needs a policy, no, no, no.
...pick up every skeleton.
Fair point.
And then there's just been some, I just heard through a few channels, some arrows tossed at the Legion, and it's like, well, if everybody just had gotten a conversation, we just talk this thing.
And I will assure you that no arrows from here at the Legion. We are, we are happy to work with them.
I think we could all really, you know, elevate things, and there's, I just moved to town 2018, so I'm a newbie around here, but it's, I would just encourage that, and so organize and figure out, you know, allocation of funds for the vet. What is the application process? What is, so then, you know, we can communicate with, with the veteran community that, you know, certainly from the Legion, we don't have every veteran in town's contact information, and a number of them have just decided to not interact with. And VSO does have that little extra or different privileged information, so just ideally, so then the other side is, this is probably, this is definitely more for a town warrant, so probably more of a, trying to understand what, you know, just looking at other towns around Massachusetts, and, you know, not just doing the minimum to comply with state law in Chapter 115, but to see what we can do to really, you know, flag about words, for the town size population we have, we are a very different town compared to another, what are we, nine, 9,500, 10,000 people?
Yeah.
Level of tourism, industry, commerce, I frankly, I believe that, you know, we should really fund. So I've got a whole bunch of extra ideas that love to share, submit this as a brainstorm, conversation starter, and then, you know, expand, figure out how we can get a warrant on the town meeting for expanding and voting for a role, whether it's a 20-hour?
Yeah.
Or a full 40-hour. So I looked through the 2024 town report. My kid just started kindergarten, so that's great. I want highly qualified humans, but seeing 120, $100,000 a year paid elementary school teacher, and then also being told by people around town that the Town of Sturbridge can't afford or doesn't want to pay for a full VSO.
Well, just, no.
I'm just, just throwing some ideas and some suggestions.
Well, the first thing is, I want to get organized on the information around the thing, so I appreciate you coming here tonight. I want to, I do want to know more about the fund and the balance of the fund and what the fund can be allocated for, because we do need an SOP on that, and then we'll build out from there. But thank you for your time here tonight, okay?
I appreciate it.
And Seth, as always, as it has been, and you've come in before, you are always welcome to come in with your ideas.
I don't mind coming in.
All right. So we are moving an item from executive session to the regular session, and this is a contemplated discharge of Michelle Durkey. Is it your request, you want to come down, Michelle, please? All right. And so just pursuant to, though the meeting long, can you please just confirm that you requested that this hearing be conducted in open session?
Yes.
Okay. And just please identify yourself for the record.
Just identify.
And, okay, so I'm gonna start with Robin, and then we'll let you do your, and just, we're gonna do one person at a time. So we're gonna start with Robin.
Excellent.
Thank you. Robin, so...
Thank you. So Michelle had been brought on as our interim several months ago, and then was moved to permanent, I believe, in May. You have a letter outlining some concerns. I think they're relatively self-explanatory. Some of it was submission of funds and how they were submitted and how they were categorized. We have several emails that had gone back and forth about the chain on this. I did meet with the state on this. The state had indicated that the way that it had been being done, and we were indicated that it was done, was not appropriate, and we're, we're okay, we're fine, and that was fine. We also had another situation where I had, where VSOs are not supposed to serve as financial advisors and are supposed to guide people toward financial advisors. We have a situation where I felt that there was an overstepping that can, not that Ms. Durkey's intentions were bad, but that that process is not the role of the VSO, that process is the role of an ASAP, and the VSO's role is to get to the ASAP. I did confirm this, I did speak with the state. I had about an hour and a half meeting with the state and their attorneys. So everything's outlined in that letter. Ms. Durkey is still in a probationary status, and it is a non-union position.
Okay. So basically, the, the summation here, at least that I understand it, was that the, that certain benefits were coded as medical that should not have been quoted as medical, is that right?
Yes, and Ms. Durkey indicated that that was something she had done before.
Yeah, but that's...
Yes, that was a practice.
Just my understanding.
Yep.
So, and then the other piece of it is a crossing of lying into financial advisor, which VSOs have a point of either statute or regulation are not supposed to do?
Yeah, and I was a bit uncomfortable with that.
Okay, but that's, I mean, that isn't May. So those are, those are the charges. So let's take them one at a time.
Excellent.
And so let's begin with, okay. All right. So we've been handed the documents.
So I'd like to start and thank you first, I'm having my 91st day of employment.
What, just hold on one second, let me get organized. Okay, so this is a seven-page document, and then?
Just a small justice.
And then it has exhibits?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give us a little bit.
No, it's okay. And just hold on one second, you should see some things. I want to just get everything organized. Okay. So, all right, so you have answered this document, and where do you want to go with it?
So I'd like to just go with my, so this is my 91st day of employment. I actually started in April. I was on interim for three months, and then I got hired on July 7th. So this is actually my 91st day of employment. This incident that I'm allegedly being accused of is 88 days after the fact, and it's also three days after why I actually do believe I'm actually being called into tonight's meeting, which I will get. I will go through the record that there were two violations against my program being on tonight. I was actually given, they noticed to come to this meeting Friday at 1:00 in the afternoon. That's when I received the card, had to sign for it, so it's not 48 hours in notification. Packed all weekend to be here, and then...
And you say the card is not available, certified?
Yes, Friday.
Okay.
And then, I also noticed that this was revised on Friday as well, which is also less than 48 hours of this cooperation.
So I'm just gonna, and again, I don't want to speak for the whole board here, I'm just speaking for myself.
Yes.
The timing stuff isn't gonna mean that much, right?
Right, right.
Because you're at will, it's relatively early, so I would, personally, and again, I don't want to speak for the board, I would rather get to the meat of it, you know what I mean?
So this meeting is called to determine the, to contemplate the termination of my court judgments. But let's be very clear, it's only about two alleged accusations regarding the same individual.
Okay.
Okay? Who, this client that she refers to is actually a veteran's spouse on Chapter 115 benefits.
Okay, and so one thing, and again, I'm sure you're gonna be sensitive to this, in terms of details, if you want to refer to the spouse A, just please don't use any identifying information.
I will, I'm a previous chaplain, so I don't know how to...
No, no, I'm just, and again, I, these are your, this is your hearing and your speech rights, so I'm not trying to curtail them into the exact, we can, I'm just asking, okay?
Correct. So spouse is veteran, Chapter 115 benefits, so it's not just an average client, it is a veteran's spouse on Chapter 115 benefits, which makes that person my client. So let's be very clear about that.
And why does it, why is the distinction between being your client and being?
A regular town employee-like client versus somebody that was just dealing with the accusation. A regular town employee-like client versus somebody that was just dealing with the accusations that they're coming at. For example, if it was just like taxes, that one of the things we might be talking about, it's not the average citizen in the town that was talking about tax payments. It's the veteran's spouse on Chapter 115 benefits.
Yeah. And I apologize for interrupting. I'm just trying.
That's okay. So, so the first accusation. So it was recording those $600 of an electrical repair bill in the meds column. Okay? So now I want to bring you to some of these exhibits. This is going to be very important. Let me just hone in a little bit. In July, there was two safety issues in the town that I was called on when I was on vacation. Mine had to do with an AC for a gentleman and one for this lady that had to do with electric. Both were safety issues. The town approved one under the same column, it said it approved the other one. Both were safety. One was for heat, for safety, one was for fire, which was her house that they disapproved. So there's the dichotomy there, because the town wants to approve one, but disapprove the other. So that's one.
So let me understand that. So you're saying that your concern is that the, with the, this is for the veteran's spouse still?
Correct.
Well, I guess it's the household, right? Because you have a hundred days.
Right. It's the veteran's spouse. The veteran's spouse is no longer with us.
Okay. Got you.
So it's the veteran's spouse.
Okay. So there's a request for services regarding an AC unit, and there's a request for services around-
It's her electrical.
Oh, it's all electrical, I see.
I was told you two scenarios that would happen in July. One was approved, and one was disapproved under the same column. I'm getting accused of filing for one of them under the column and not the other one, when the town had no problem approving one and disapproving the other, but they were filed for the same reason, safety.
Okay. So, but I guess if I'm understanding it, the concern is that it's less inherently about the filing and it's more, again, because I look at it as kind of like with healthcare, where you code it, it's more of how it was coded for reimbursement, if I'm understanding it?
Correct.
So, okay, so, okay.
So under this column where it says meds, there's also a clause which I can bring you to exhibit.
Okay.
There's a clause that says for, like, there's an extra clause above that, and I can bring you to the exhibit.
Okay. Where is the exhibit?
So I'm going to bring you to, first off, Exhibit 7, which I'm bringing you to the two points.
Okay.
So this is the one that was hers, the electrical. And then 7A right afterwards. I first want to, if it makes it, maybe this is so much easier for you.
Yeah.
After my seven-page paper, I all gave you a sheet that I dropped on from a computer.
Okay.
Of the columns I can only choose from. Basically, Exhibit 0.
I think I'm a little, maybe I made a mistake or something, but I'm just-
It should be an 10%.
No, no, I just think that there might be a collating issue or something. Let me just see what I have. So we have the CMR. I apologize.
I think you might copy him.
No, no, I just want to understand it. So we have the CMR over here.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's considered an A, B?
It should be that was, so I can just see my page.
Okay.
This is what I'm going to choose.
Okay.
It should be AA, AB, and then the corner.
AA, AB. And it goes to 2. Now it should be, so that's my-
It's AA, AB. Exhibit 1. It's numerical or a 12?
Okay.
That's-
Can you just speak? Are you going to see this?
They all have that.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Listen. I don't think we're going to refer to Example 2 right now anyways.
Okay. I apologize then. I'll stop. So, okay. So back to it. Sorry, my interruption. I just wanted to see if the documents were correct.
So Example 7 is her thing that was eventually corrected.
Okay.
Because that's what the town asked me to do. So it was corrected.
Okay.
So it was put in under a miscellaneous, and which the town, the financial director doesn't understand, we put it under miscellaneous, who then have to ask for prior approval, which is a bigger issue, which we will get to later in this argument.
Okay.
But, so it was corrected. It was put under this platform, if you will. Okay? So that's why I left you this screen, sorry.
Okay.
The state allows med call in for veteran service officers because it's the actual only home that we can use that allows us to openly put funds in. Everything else is blocked to a degree. We can only put certain amounts in there, if you will.
Okay.
So let me draw you to 7A, Exhibit 7A. When it says meds up to $1,000, the clause that says Chapter 647, Act 1989, that's why. So when safety issues come up, when emergency situations come up, if it doesn't fall under any other category at that moment, because we want the town to get reimbursed 75% of the Chapter 115 benefits, the state allows a column that we can put these funds in, because we can't put it under, at that moment, hospital, dental, doctor, fuel, original benefits, or, which I will show you later, there's a screenshot that says, use your prior approvals, prior approvals very, very sparingly. Because when you use your prior approvals, it only lets us click certain categories. And usually, those categories are thousands of dollars. In this lady's situation, the only option I could pick was shelter repair. So I ended up using her shelter repair for $600 electrical bill. So now if a tree falls on her house in the middle of the winter and destroys her roof, she no longer has a shelter repair option. The town forced me to use that shelter repair option.
And question, again, and you might have said this, and I apologize. When you say electrical bill, do you mean a utility bill? Or do you mean an actual repair of a box or something?
The town called me and said it was an emergency situation, that the repair box, and she had a freight fire. If it was not repaired at that moment, it was going to cause a fire. They had to shut it down, and it had to be repaired.
Okay.
Her house was going to catch fire. It was a safety emergency situation.
No, no, I got it. And I thought that's what it was, but thank you. Go ahead.
So, at that time, you may just recall to the veteran service officers. And this column that I showed you in 7A allows that. The state approved it. I explained it to the state right off. The state knew. Emergency, safety, electrical, fire hazard. They approved it. Problem came when the town's Director of Finance questioned me two weeks later and said, why is this approved under the meds column? She overstepped her bounds in that respect, because the state approved it. I had already showed her the VS21 that it approved. And in the same week, she had already approved the safety issues for the AC or another gentleman. So let me just go back to my original argument why I'm here tonight. So the first accusation, like I said, is they want to accuse me of recording things in the long haul. The second accusation is providing financial advice for a client. So in that first accusation, I give you five or six other exhibits. I won't waste your time, so we can look them up. That's absolutely, we can do it. But Exhibit 15, Exhibit 15A, 17. There's plenty of exhibits here to show you how state did not have an issue. Because if state had an issue, I worked in four other towns, they would have fired me. State is very aware. There's email traffic in these exhibits, but knows exactly what I did. State is also very aware what this town did between the town administrator and the Director of Finance, one of which we will get to, because I haven't even got that for you. The second accusation is providing financial advice for clients. So let me bring you to the next exhibit, Example AA and AB. The entire job of a good veteran service officer is to provide financial advice for the veteran and their families. We collect three months' bank statements. We collect fuels. We collect mortgages. We collect tax documents. They are on Chapter 115 benefits. It's a state check for impoverished veterans and their families. It is not a town check. It is a state subsidy check for impoverished veterans. In order for them to maximize the quality of their life and their health, we need to do financial assistance with them. We need to know how much money they're getting so they can eat, so they can buy butter, so they can buy socks. So I want to bring you to some of the documents in some of these exhibits that says exactly what my job duties are. And the state tells us that when we collect these things, that's exactly what we do. Exhibit 25 in the bottom will tell you, medical assistance, VSO. Funding, the state of funding, VSO. Application processes and approval and monitoring for the financial assistance, VSO. Emergency assistance, VSO. Going down further, Exhibit 27. In all of this, it will show you that I'm supposed to collect documentation with property tax, water rates, fire insurance premiums, sewage rates, and reasonable maintenance expenses. These are the forms that the state gives me that I'm supposed to do twice a year. Thousands of pieces of paper that I'm supposed to send up to state by January and by July to recertify every single one of my veterans on Chapter 115 benefits. This is just one example. It's all about, not to mention, which I don't think this town, the town director and the town administrator knows, I'm also supposed to give them Medicare savings plans, because I'm supposed to refund that money. So it's me that puts these people, not the senior center, not the director of finance. Anything that has to do with veterans and everything that has to do with the veteran's spouse, I do, as a veteran service officer, to include their taxes, to include their assessing, to include their medical. So that's the second accusation that I'm supposed to get fired for tonight. But I'm here to tell you the real reason. It's the funding that I had asked for. Because when I asked the financial director and the town administrator about various fundings and where certain things are, I keep getting mixed stories. One person says it exists, $13,000, for example, as mentioned earlier, $13,000 in the sustainment fund. But then the Director of Finance says it doesn't exist. And then I go back a month later. Where is this $13,000 so I can help this lady? Who, by the way, is still out of electrical power three months later, because the town, somebody in the town, I don't know who, told the electrician to stop at the panel box and told the electrician to stop at the crane. So she is still without electricity for three months. Because had I been involved from the beginning as the veteran's spouse, I would have actually done a shelter repair and had her entire house repaired under the shelter repair. And the tax town would have then actually probably only benefited from 75% of, let's say, a $30,000 bill for the electrical repair instead of the $600 that we all got. But I was not involved. So the town are benefited, and so definitely would the veteran's spouse. But I have not been told about anything since I started this job. Not to mention the fact that the illegal actions that this town director and town administrator are fully aware of that is contained in place. This is why I'm being fired. I have been calling them out on illegal veterans' tax repayments. This is what my letter does have. I have called them out on illegal veterans' tax repayments, garnishing the Chapter 115's checks to pay towards back taxes. Exhibit 10 and Exhibit 33-30 through 36. It is a state law. In absolutely no way whatsoever is a town supposed to take a Chapter 115 check from an impoverished person. They depend on that check. Even if the veteran, which this town will say, agreed to this letter, it's because she was told that if she didn't have her garnishes with her Chapter 115 retrieved, she was going to lose her house. I want to tell you that as a veteran service officer, I have the authority to not only put her house on the lien, there's another exhibit in there, but then also give her a $500 fund to keep that veteran in her house. That is my authority as a veteran service officer. So she wouldn't lose her house. But the town's director does not know that, because the town director never asked, and she overstepped her lines into my department. The town administrator doesn't know this, because in the six months I have been working here, she has never asked me what my job description is and what I do as my duties. She has only taken what she thinks my job is by what the director has told her what my job is. Second. Hip of in confidentiality violations. For some odd reason, the director in this town thinks that they can just ask for all the doctors' bills from all these veterans. That is illegal. It is my job to get these bills and the prescriptions from the veterans. I send it up to state, either medical or doctors. I get the VS21 approval. Once I get that VS21 approval, then I send it to the director. It is only the director's job to know that the state approved it. I don't even keep that stuff in my office. Because if my office got a rebate or got an intu or something happened, it's a confidentiality that I don't want to be responsible for. So when I get those stuff, I immediately scan it to state. It's in the state record of that person up at the state level. So for the director to want that in her office is a hip of in confidentiality break. There's no reason for her to have it. She's, again, overstepping those lines for wanting those kinds of documentations for people in the community. She has no need to have that information. Her job only is to monitor whether or not my recertifications from January to July are in balance with her books by July, and then again by January. That is it. Everything else I've sent her to approvals by the state. I'm accountable to state to get those approvals. And then I give her those approvals to the town director. Suspicious accounting practices. I have questioned about suspicious accounting practices because of that retirement income that he never had. Two years of a veteran, oh, two years of a veteran was back paid because he was put in, when I did my recertification this past July, I noticed that he was receiving a $700 income. Now, he's on Chapter 115 benefits. And he was receiving a $700 income in his retirement at the age of 96 all of a sudden. And receiving a $700 income, which now puts him to owe the town back money. So it put him over the amount that he was supposed to get his Chapter 115 benefits for. So now he was on a spendout for two years. I come in in July. I come in in July and I do a recertification. I don't see how a 96-year-old man all of a sudden is qualified to receive a retirement at 94. And I'm not going to put it in my recertification document. So I go back a year, still don't see it. I go through all the state records that the previous VSO had. I don't see it. I don't see it through the bank statements. I don't see it through any, there's no documentation to support a retirement. I go back another year, I don't see it. I go back another year, still don't see it. Three years, there was no documentation to prove that this 96-year-old man had a $700 retirement. I apologize. Sir, did you retire at 94? In his words, "Well, that would be a strange age to retire at." And I said, "Well, that's what I thought, sir. I just wanted to make sure." So then I called the state and I said, "You verified that this gentleman did not receive retirement. I don't see it and I don't want to put it on my recertification." He was to say the gentleman was owed back pay. The state verified that. You will see that in my exhibit. If this town is really moderating so closely to all the paperwork that they're supposed to be doing, you would have thought that they would have picked up on a 96-year-old man's income, retirement for two years, that he was not receiving a retirement for two years. So that's the exhibit that I have showed you. Going back to the hip-up confidentiality, they stuck me, which is perfectly fine in the senior center. It's a beautiful building, absolutely gorgeous. But there is a hip-up confidentiality when you make veterans come into that building of veterans' specific business, sign in to the senior center. If they're there for senior center business, they're there for senior center business. If they're for veterans' business, they have no need or rights to have to sign into that building just so the senior center can be their credit. That is a confidentiality thing. They should just be able to walk upstairs. If the ladies at the front desk want to say, "I'm here for the senior center for veterans' office." And they say, "Veterans' office," well, you go upstairs. Because who's there to see me, why they're there to see me, is not anybody's business. That is a conflict of interest for anybody else. They're there for me, for confidentiality reasons. Like a few veterans have already expressed, when we come for help as a veteran myself, when we come for help, we want that to be as private as possible. We don't need as many people involved. Nor do we want to document as least places as possible. All right. So another fourth thing I'm getting fired for is I have stood my ground, even though the town administrator tried to accuse me of these wrongdoing for the past three months that I've been hired, six months in the actual position. Because the town administrator and the director of finance, through many, many emails, have undiscovered what I've asked them, said yes to some things, said there were some things. And I don't know if it's a ploy that they have so we have to keep them at it and ask them the same circle over and over again. But I can tell you that this last Tuesday that I was on, I specifically asked to open up the line and account number in my own department so I can still help this lady pay for her electric bill. Because the witch is coming. And she still hasn't turned on her boiler because it's connected to the electricity that has not been able to be fixed because my shelter repair was used up. So I asked for my own line and account number for the veterans service department. That was Tuesday. Wednesday is when the town administrator wrote the letter of my dismissal. And I got it Friday. So for the last few months that I've been hired, because I've asked too many questions and have, if you don't think the state knows, I have expressed much concern to the state. The director of finance up there knows, the director of benefits knows. They wanted to call the attorneys on this town. I'm the one that held off the attorneys. Because I told them that I would get the work plan from the one that the director previously did, that predated me, that she willingly sent in an email, which is also in an exhibit. As long as I also created my own and backed off on that person's records. So the state asked me to create a work plan and put it up in that person's records. And retrieve that person's monies back because it's illegal. So that's why I asked to get that person's monies back so she could leave you a tiny of her own check. And she could pay her back taxes through Unipay, which this town allows an on-payment system for, which she did not know about because the director of finance didn't tell her. So my concern for the veterans and the people of this town, and whoever might be listening, is that there are senior benefits, there are veteran benefits. There is a Unipay system out there that people can go on and pay their own bills. But very few people know about this because the director of finance doesn't tell them that. And in another email, the town administrator is very quick to say, "I don't even know how this fell on your lap. We have done this for others." Oh, so they have done this for others. Exhibit AA. So this is not the first time that they have retrieved illegally peoples' Chapter 115 benefits. And nor are they going to stop. Because in another email, there's a mass distribution going out to all the departments from the director of finance right now that she sent out in July. And two months later, she's saying, "Where's the follow-up on this person's benefits? I want everybody to respond." So you want me as a veterans service officer and the assessor and whomever else might be on this mass email to correspond to you, the director of finance, and by the way, I thought it was a lateral position to me, by the way, about my veterans' benefits? When I privately emailed you anyways, yes, I may correspond to this person and her family. Because again, I take the privacy of my veteran and their families very, very highly. I don't exploit my people. So for her to follow up two months later and ask about those benefits in a mass email again, tells me that she's after that Chapter 115 benefits because she's given to the state in that email too, "I'll deal with the tax arrears." So I know that they want that tax, Chapter 115 check again. So I have not put this person on the Chapter 115 benefits yet. Because behind closed doors, and I'll be the first to say it, I have been counseling this family on what to do first before I put her on Chapter 115 benefits. I was the first to tell her to go start with Unipay, pay off some taxes, do what you need to do, and then when you get behind, ahead, we'll talk about the Chapter 115 benefits. Because I wanted to fix this issue that this town, the director of finance and the town administrator appear to think that they can keep doing.
So, okay, so there's a lot there, and there's some fairly serious accusations. And I guess the part that I kind of, my initial reaction is that the sort of, and I'm not trying to award you, I'm just trying to understand it, is that there is some sort of scheme around garnishment of Chapter 115 money by the director of finance that the town administrator and presumably the previous veteran's agent was aware of, and the Commonwealth's aware of it, that the Commonwealth's lawyers weren't going to investigate. That's the part I'm, I-
They were going to come to this town and investigate actually what was actually happening in this particular town because of that, and I held them back.
Well, but that's the part, I guess, I struggle with because my experience with Commonwealth auditors is that they don't, they're not reluctant to audit us. And I guess, and I'm not trying to argue with it, I'm just giving my response. And there's a lot of documents here, and I'm honestly having a hard time following some of them because some of them are kind of one page of an email and they're out of order. And I get that you just got this on Friday and are moving fast, and this is a very overwhelming time. But, so just kind of at a high level, that the, it seems like there's, there's some pretty serious accusations. It seems like it's a, I'm not sure how this relationship is curable on some level. And I'll be honest with you, it seems-
I mean, it's not going to be curable. They were willing to work together and understand that they can't overstep veterans' department. And that every director in their department knows their position in their department. And the director of finance needs to not-
But did you see how those scales weigh difficult in a difficult manner, though? Because think about it, you're saying that we're, you're basically accusing the finance director of a fraud or a costly crime.
That's what it was.
Hey, please, this is, you have to stay in motion. But then you're saying that you can work together with them to fix it and that the Commonwealth itself is, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm really just trying to be honest with you.
Because I salvaged that by putting up the work plan that the veteran had made. So she had had a work plan that she created with this veteran spouse.
Okay.
That predated me. So even at the time that she refused to give it to me, I got it from the veteran. And that's what the state said, "You need to go get this work plan because it's not in their records." And I said, "I understand." They said, "There's absolutely no documentation. We're going through it. Whatever agreements that this town made with this lady, it's not there." And I said, "Well, this is what the director says." And I said, "Well, they said it's not there. We don't see it. Go get it." And I said, "Fine." So I went and got it and retrieved it from the veteran's spouse personally. So it was that that saved us.
Okay. So, I mean, at this point, I'm not really ready to do anything on this at this moment myself. But what do you guys think?
I don't think we can make a decision on this right now.
So I think that for the moment, we're going to just take this under advisement because you were getting pieces, you know, the charges and what you're right for this is to be charred, you know, to understand what we're accusing you of because we're the government and we're taking your property right away from you. And so, and you've made a variety of accusations that are new to me. And I understand this is all happening quickly in your end. So we have to kind of understand the timeline some and probably hear from some of the folks on our end who are involved in it, in the Commonwealth and perhaps the council. So I don't think we're ready to do anything else right at this moment. And unless there's anything else, I think we're just going to look at it for the moment.
I would request, and I do have the authority to do this, to put Ms. Durkey on paid administrative leave. So that she does not come in tomorrow until this is resolved, particularly given some of the misrepresentations.
Well, I know the goal, that at this point is charged. In terms of administrative leave, I do, that there would be a normal practice whenever we're contemplating something like this for anybody.
Well, then I have to work from home, if that's okay, because it's also recertification time. And you're ensuring your benefits because-
Yeah, we can't do that. It's unfortunately going to have to be a period of administrative leave. We'll have to sort that out. I appreciate the concern. I'm not trying to be daffy, but-
You're on a greater than, and the veterans can't get the recertification.
I understand that, but the point is, you're making some pretty serious allegations here and there's a termination pending. So our standard practice in town is to separate and figure out what's going on just so that we can be organized. So I appreciate the concern and we'll have to sort that out. So with that, appreciate your comments. You are on administrative leave pending an intermission. All right, I appreciate you. And have a good time and have a good night, sorry. And I know this is a difficult circumstance, but we're going to evaluate it seriously and we'll make the best decision.
And I will have a public response at some point to some of the, on behalf of Ms. Barry.
Well, let's worry about that, one thing at a time. One thing at a time. We're understanding that the accusations are serious and the board is going to act deliberately to figure out what the specifics of the circumstance are. And we understand Barbara's a long service. And we understand that that allegations are serious. But this is also a termination hearing and that is also serious. So with that, thank you very much.
There are a lot of documents needed in my exhibit.
Okay, so now I think we're moving into an actual executive session. So thank you, everybody, for staying. And so do we have a motion to go into executive session during the hearing?
A motion to go into executive session.
You have the, you have the review.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Executive session, MGL 30A, 41A, want to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints against, upon an officer, employee, staff member, or individual.